Connie is absent today, and so I will be running the meeting. This is the August fourth meeting of the whole. And we'll start with a roll call.
Councilor Pointer.
Here.
Councilor Sherling.
Here.
Councilor Gray.
Here.
Councilor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilor Dietrich.
Here.
Okay, first thing on our agenda is the Anderson Street Reconstruction Project. Sam, would you like to speak to that? Would you do me a favor? Over here.
Probably in a tag team, some of us will chat, but. So here's an oral update. First. We're going to check plans, working on permanent easements, talking with city staff. Getting looking to get those out here the next week or two, so we'll get self-prepared with. It'll be, we'll have template letters for each one that can go out, so the city can mail that along with the, let's be the property owners. We'll have temporary easements, but one of these, we want to get the permanent ones out there first. I'm sure people have some questions. We'll probably have, the public meeting will have, will come later, once kind of we get preliminary assessment stuff put together as well. I've been talking with, well, actually last week, Chad, Jason, and Perry about various items related to easements. Some water main stuff, which we'll talk about here in a minute, and then Jason's working on kind of figuring out too, or some other, whether some other sewer services where some will go, some, there's some tied together on the duplex, their condos across from Ball Park, as well as the fourplex, or the model. But when we met the city back in June. One of the items that came up was switching from six inch water main to eight inch water main going up the Anderson Street. And there's no lust, rather any lust plume, so it can go plastic. Normally historically, everything's pretty much been docked, because usually there's been lost sites, but. Can go PVC on this. Estimating prices from a six inch PVC water main to an eight inch PVC water main is an increase of about five to ten dollars a foot. So not a lot, so that's anywhere from fifty-five hundred to about eleven thousand dollars on the overall project. For this first phase. And then Chad was also talking about maybe going to install one inch plastic instead of three quarter inch copper water services. The current stops. So the going one inch plastic is a cost savings of about five to ten dollars a foot, so. If plastic is installed instead of copper, maybe for maybe twenty-six hundred to fifty-two hundred dollars in savings. Going with plastic water services instead of copper. Yes, Chad, I know you're. The intent is to go eight inch plastic, correct?
Correct, so.
Good job. You can help.
Okay. Um, if that's eight inch, just to upsize some of the main, we're looking into the future with the potential B of D projects. So anything I can do to help get more water moving is going to be better off. And then the reason we started talking about the one inch plastic service lines, because copper is expensive. We go to one inch, because the inside diameter of one inch. Plastic line is the same as the three quarter inch, so that's why you upsize, because the inside diameter of plastic is smaller. So we go to one inch, but there's a cost savings there if we go that route. And then we can kind of apply that to whatever it costs to go from six inch to eight inch. So that was the whole. Making Sam punch a lot of numbers, because originally they had preliminary numbers based off of running ductile iron pipe probably up that street, because that's what's on Main Street. So he said lust points, they can either call a lust point or a plume site, and what that is referred to as old gas stations. So like if there's an old gas station tank in the ground, and it leaked, which ninety percent of the old ones did. The DNR knows where all those are, and we consider those lust points. We had to be so many feet away from that with plastic pipe. So like on Main Street, you get a lot of lust points. So instead of going plastic, ductile iron, plastic, you just do all ductile iron and copper. You just can't use any plastic in most points. We are not in any of those points now, so that we can get that cost savings to go to plastic. And which we use a lot of plastic in town. And the plastic service lines is getting to be very, very common, from all of our new subdivisions have them. And we just run tracer wires and stuff with them, but. So there's a little bit of savings there that we can apply to the upsizing from six to eight. And I think that. I think that'll be a better product at the end of the day, especially with us looking down the road at a B of D and trying to move more water out to that east end.
Life expectancy, copper versus plastic, that's what will be asked, so.
I, so plastic's a little bit newer of a thing. We have only allowed it here for maybe, maybe ten years now, about it. Haven't any issues with it. The only issue that a homeowner might think they might have is their ground for their houses are all on the, on their, their service line coming out. So if it's an old galvanized line or copper line, that's still going to ground them just fine, it's just going to go into the ground, and then it cuts that off of us. So then we don't have to worry about electrolysis on our stuff. I would say the plastic pipe is just as good and not better than, than the copper. You can't, I mean, there's going to be things that could prematurely fail, you know, that the big rock gets thrown down in there when they're backfilling, it doesn't matter if it's copper or plastic. It's going to rub and it vibrates and it's going to go. But as far as installation wise. And the guys all like working with plastic air a lot more than copper, it's a lot more forgiving, so.
What is the, I know there's like a mathematical equation, but I don't know how to figure it out, but going from six to eight inches, how much more volume of water can we move?
No, I don't have that in top of my head, but it's, it's not like doubling it, but it's pretty darn close. You wouldn't think that, but when you start, it's not just all you got an extra two inches here, it's two inches all the way around that line, so it's quite a bit of water that you can move through that eight inch.
The plastic lines are a little bit more forgiving than, than the freeze, do you want that? They tend to expand a little bit.
They do. It just limits you a little bit on hiking, on freedom. On the old, look a welder to the line doesn't work on that.
That'll work.
Will there be some sort of. Educational piece put out, I mean, with us going to plastic, if they run plastic going to the house itself too, or do they still have to run copper?
So we only go to the curb stop.
Right.
So I would go, we'd get to the curb stop, the curb stop's the same exact curb stop you'd use on copper. So the copper is called CTS, also means copper tubing size, so it's one inch CTS, it's the same outside diameter, so it's the same exact fitting. You'd use it for bringing copper to their house, and then on the other side, whatever they have, whether it's galvanized or copper, you know, then we hook onto that with another fitting. That's, that's no different than if we did it with, with copper, you know, you're going to come with three quarter inch copper, but in curb stop on, then we had to get to whatever it is, where it is currently there.
Well, when we look at assessments, understand the service line assessment is what goes to the property owners, so we're saving them by a hundred and ten dollars a foot. That's the property owner seeing that savings right at the back, the water main ourselves, we pay for as part of the project.
But when you look at, you know, the overall cost, it's.
I like the idea of going bigger, I mean, you don't know what. Thirty years down the road brings as far as developments and the B of D and everything like that, so it just, it just opens us up to be able to do better things.
I think it's great looking at different avenues, I'm just, I just, there are different kinds of pipe regulations, saves a lot of money.
The downfall of plastic is literally just the lust point stuff, so you gotta be two hundred and fifty feet. If you're within that two hundred and fifty feet, you're just, yeah, like, I think it's always Bowens, yeah. We're, we're out of that one, so.
Good. Any other questions? Thanks, guys.
Thanks for looking into the other option.
Okay, number two, the old residential bank erosion. Doug, Jason wants to start.
Hold on up, Doug.
I don't know, yeah, it's, so it's, there's a spot there, you guys seen the pictures? It's, I mean, we've lost multiple feet, we lost probably three, four more feet after this last high water, too, so. I don't know what the solution is, I just know that we just keep losing ground there. One of the disc golf holes goes right by there, as does our nature trail. Spots there that had some old concrete sidewalk panels in there that have held, but the spot that's eroding does not have any, I don't know how long ago that was even placed there, but. It basically just goes, falls right off, so. Wanted everybody to be aware of it.
What's the elevation of the string top of the bank to the water level?
Depends on the water level, but it's probably twelve feet.
Yeah, so it's fairly steep, and it's straight up and down, and that's part of what's undercutting that bank, because it's not bedrock there that's sandy soils. So as the earth comes down, it washes out from underneath the bed, it's washed down a couple trees, we've got some issues, we had to take a tree out of there. Because it's a hazard for kayakers and tubers and people that are using the river. One of the concerns we have is how do we actually address this? We've looked at this a couple different times over the years. Part of it is you have to slope that bank back, which means we're losing more of that top space in order to get a little place. Riprap and armorize that bank. Well, part of that is because it's a city, there's not necessarily grants available to us either, there used to be some funding for the NCR, NRCS. Office for us to be able to armorize that stuff, and so we'll be looking at different ways for us to reinforce that bank, so we don't lose as much. But again, it is a river, and it's going to move and relocate things.
Yeah, and, and there is a tree in there right now, I haven't checked it since it went back down, but I don't think it's going anywhere, so we'll probably have another one, we'll have to fish out, that was one that was right on the bank. That kind of fell in with the erosion, but it's there, and it's not, not getting any better. We've, we've been lucky for about the last three years or so, we haven't really had any high water events, so it's kind of, it got. There was vegetation growing up on it, and kind of thought maybe we were okay, and then the last one came through, wiped all that out, wiped out a tree, no good, right? So pictures you guys have, there's probably another, oh, probably three feet or so that, that had come off after this last high water. So it's, it's still hitting, it's just undercutting and it's sinking down and falling in.
How close are we to the trail and what goes on?
It's on the trail right now.
Okay, so we have what? Something saying, watch it. I mean, you know, do we have flags or anything?
No, you can't miss it. Or? You can't miss it.
Yes, they can.
It's right, it's right there, it's no different than a one goes four, other than it's come out about, you know, I don't know, five, six feet or so. I, I don't know, if we put something in, it's probably going to lose it.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
Yeah.
I, I have concerns about people on bikes, walking, you're walking slow enough, but, or even jogging, you're close enough to it, if you're on a bike, sometimes you're looking ahead.
It's a, yeah, it's grass trail.
Okay, so it's not on the bike trail?
No, 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 it's back behind, so it would be, if you were to go to the west end of the dog park and walk, there's a little road, it goes back there, if you walk straight back there.
Back where the tree is.
Yeah.
You'd speak.
Yes, yeah, you'll run right.
I've seen the pictures, but. Where they are.
Yeah, it's, so, yeah, I mean, there, there's still solid probably ten to twelve, ten, twelve feet of trail there, of grass trail. So we mow that, and then we have a little buffer strip of some old shrubs and weeds and stuff that we left to, to kind of mark off where the disc golf fairway would be. And so there is room over there as well, that's probably fifteen to twenty feet full of, of mowed grass. That serves as the fairway for one of the holes, so there's still a lot of room to get around it, but it's just got a lot worse here recently.
But you feel it stills.
Yeah, I mean, if you go over the edge, you're going in, but it was that way, it's been that way for a while. I'm sure it'll grow back up if the water goes down, but yeah, I mean, you could definitely go in it, but you'd have to be completely unaware to go in it.
Did you end up getting a picture from the other side looking at the bank washed out, or?
It's really hard to get over there. And they'll be in the winter, I could do it, but I'm not walking through that, it's pretty thick vegetation out there on that side. I'll send you down to kayak with a camera if you want.
I kayak as far as you, I mean, it's been that way for a while, but it's gotten worse.
It's definitely, yeah, and, and it's all, it's all fresh stuff right now, so it's really obvious, because they used to have, they used to have a couple layers to it, where it was some, some stuff was growing up in there, and you have to scrub the trees, they grew up, and. Now it's just grass, the bag to water.
What? I don't know if you guys ever want to do it, but if you drugged that all back and then sanded it, I mean, it'd be a stopping spot for people when they go down the river, but.
I don't think it would stay, because it's right into the, I think everything would just wash out. Yeah, because the sand is up a little farther upstream, right where, right before it hits that bend, and that's the problem, is that's where the water bends and it runs around it. Yeah, so that's, and there's nothing really to hold it anymore, there's no trees. You know, there's no root system there, it's just. It's a long stretch, yeah, it's, yeah, probably a hundred yards I'd say at least, yeah. Yeah.
So. I don't know if this could be done, when the Anderson does get pulled out or out. Could big chunks of that be saved, or, or rebar in it? It cannot be used more in the water, that's just what I was going to ask, I knew it probably had rebar.
Because I, I think that would do the trick, because like I said, you can see, you can't tell now, because everything's grown up and it's been covered, but you can see where there was some old panels from years and years and years ago, that held. But yeah, that would be the easy fix, but I don't think we're really, that's kind of frowned upon unless we were to find something that didn't have rebar in it.
We, we've all the much limestone down there from. Hope you. Well, then, in terms of doing that, why we had to get a DNR permit to do it, and.
Yeah.
Riprap might be the best option.
Yeah, and, and what was the, had to be graded back so far that we?
Yeah, yeah, they have service.
Yeah.
Fifteen, one, one foot, you gotta go back.
Then you go back a boy of ways into that, into that field, which again, not, not a real big issue of it, but it's just, you know, the cost of a spot that isn't really all that heavily used. We can reroute the disc golf course, we can reroute the trail, it's not like it's a, it doesn't have to be right there, it's just, this problem is just now getting a little worse and becoming a little more obvious. But I figured I'd bring it to your attention, but you don't.
Our little, our little pair of us up there yesterday, I lost probably about the same, about seventeen, a bank in like one area. Ooh.
Yeah.
Well, that's a long ways down.
Yeah.
Where'd that tree go that was there?
Yeah.
It's gone completely.
Yeah, that was how we really noticed, noticed it was going, was the tree went, and then you just check back every day or so, and it was a little bit more and a little bit more, and you could look down in there and see. You know, you could see the sand coming out of the dirt that it was just falling in, so it was, you know, it was pretty fresh.
Cricks and streams always redirect themselves, no matter what. You try to do a straight line, do whatever, they'll go whichever way you want to.
Anything else? Thanks, Doug, thanks, Doug. Gerald Parker, backwater holder, Jason, you want to talk to this one?
Yeah, I can. We just basically wanted to bring it back up and, and talk about potentially getting, you know, instant engineering done and, and things like that on. I'm moving forward with trying to get something going for backfairs, starting to watch out a lot worse, and. I mean, it's, it's kind of held its ground to where it's been, but we have thrown some stuff in there to hold it around there. But basically just kind of wanted to get it back on the radar to, to start thinking about.
It's going to take some time for us to get the permits for that, and we kind of need to figure out. How involved we want to get into the design work there, do we want to do a low hit crossing? That's always wet, because the reality is, it's not the. Backwaters, it's flooding the coconut, it's the coconut flooding into the backwaters, so it's going backwards. Question is, do we have a little permanent ditch there that has water flowing over, and that's what you're, what you use to keep your water level in that backwaters? Because that's what people that live around there want to keep, so they want to maintain that elevation. Yeah, by doing it that way, we won't worry about beaver issues plugging up the pipe, too. But again, that's a challenge, it's hard to put that together, and so I think that's something really we can sit down and talk about a little bit. Talk to a couple engineers that work on that, and see what the best route is, because I know some people aren't excited about having a crossing there, because. It might get slippery with moths and stuff like that. Was like a little danger to look at the kids' life. But same token, I think that's just an easy way for us to not have to worry about being able to be really ready to base, putting up pretty pulver and having it brought out, too, after a hundred years.
We wouldn't be able to access it with mow, would be the downside, you know, unless we can drive home, unless it's wide enough and shallow enough where we can drive home.
You should be able to keep it shallow enough, because there's not that much water coming into that backwater, there's two strings back there, or springs?
I think two, yeah.
So the big thing is how we can keep it the elevation, that's what the elevation of the banks may be, and you can try to keep it about three, four inches deep. To drive over, but that's going to take some planning and engineering.
And the possibility, too, is it, it could just, the low water could stay dry, there's still, we still have a pipe going through it, and keep it dry. Seventy-five percent of the time would be potential, so.
Has there ever been bits of older, kind of just see what it would be like to either dredge out that pond while we're going upward?
No, we haven't really been to that, because dredging that, what do you do with the dirt?
Right.
Or are you hauling it to, and that's, that's where the dredging cost comes from, is you got to place it someplace.
I think it's a good idea to get started on those permits, because by the days are going to be big flood and wash it out, and then we're going to have the water back there.
And then have a long process to get it going again.
That's right.
Oh, I'll talk, Jason, I'll talk to a couple engineers first to see what, what prices are there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Okay, management software, Aaron, you want to talk first?
I'll defer to Tim on this one, because he's kind of taking the lead on it.
Tim, please.
Thank you. So our current Word docs program that we use for our programming is going away. Diligent Solutions purchased Word docs a number of years ago, now they're going to now transition away from Word docs to Diligent Solutions. We have to upgrade to that before the end of the year, because that's when our contract ends, and that's when they're ending their pro, program, first against Word docs. So since we're going to have to transition anyway, I wanted to look at an alternate agenda packet company. Civic Plus does agenda packets, they do websites, they do basically a whole suite of things for government entities. That would be the best to use, benefit from. So I did ask and have a presentation on Civic Plus. I like the program, I think it's going to become a little bit more intuitive for staff to use. One of the biggest plus I have with Civic Plus is we can drag and drop. Word documents, Excel spreadsheets, PDFs, but Excel and Word documents and PowerPoint presentations, when we drag and drop that into Civic Plus, automatically converts it to a PDF. Everything we put in on these documents, we try to keep it as a PDF, so most people have access to it, they can open it without changing it readily, you make modifications to it. It also auto saves, we don't have to sit there with the save button, there have been a few times where Aaron and I have been working on, on agenda packets, and things have gotten messed up. Typically does not allow two of us in the same agenda item at the same time. But there have been, like, is where we were in there, and when we exited out or saved out, our stuff that we put in there didn't save.
The notes we wrote are, yeah.
Yeah, and so. We may have to go through and rewrite those things, and that's been kind of a headache. So after reviewing the diligent proposal and the Civic Plus proposal, Civic Plus is going to be a little bit more expensive. But I think it's a better program today, you know, the other thing is with Civic Plus, we are also looking eventually relocating our website. Currently, we have our website sitting on a SOX program, which is really a web-based program that would design for school systems. Not, not as user-friendly as we'd like it to be, and then you got just a certain number of templates. So with website side, Aaron is more on, in tune with that.
And there's a lot of cities that do use the Civic Plus. Remember, you know, what's the cost difference?
The Word docs, if we want just the basic, plain basic.
What we have now?
What we have now, we're paying about twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred dollars for just the basic, right now.
Ninety years?
A year. It would go to three thousand under diligent communities. All that is, it just allows us to create the agenda packet, email it out. We go to the Civic Plus, and our third proposal is. We'll have to go through, transition some of the information, because we want to store all the information we've got, write to the new one. We're looking at seventy-three hundred dollars one time upfront. And then after that, it would be forty-two hundred dollars a year. So it's thirteen, twelve hundred dollars more, but the difference between the two is with the Civic Plus, I can get up to five boards included, so I can do the city council.
We can have planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, board of adjustment, parks and recreation.
Library board if they wanted to use them.
I wasn't going to invite them, because they're, they're special. We can have five committees that way, so everybody would have the opportunity to use the same board.
What would it cost us to get all the boards on it?
That's that forty-two hundred dollars a year.
No, no, you go one of the five.
More than five.
More than five. I'd have to go back through them now, but I'm not sure, that's a little bit more.
Yeah, I just had a curiosity, just, you know, if we get everybody on one system.
Yeah, well, do we really need everybody? The five major ones we need, but we have some of the small advisory committees that aren't necessarily needed to be on the system. Because the other challenge is everybody's got to learn the system and, and be able to input, because I'm not doing it for everyone, neither is Aaron.
Oh, come on.
Yeah.
A current board doc.
Current board doc, two, one?
One.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just the city councils.
We can't. Can't have it.
We'll fight, but get.
I'm sorry.
Sure?
Yes, go right there.
So if I'm looking at this right diligent, if we look at it, and we look at kind of the same things that Civic would give us. polished air meetings, unlimited agendas, minutes, templates, workflow, management, websites, agendas. That's six thousand dollars.
It is. Yep, it's a little over, it'll be up to six. One of the things that Civic Plus does that diligent doesn't do is helps create the minutes, and when you do live council votes. And absentee votes and stuff like, or who's absent and stuff like that, so it would be a way for Aaron to get her minutes done a lot faster, and saves her some time that way, too. So that's the other reason why I like the Civic Plus is because the minute-taking aspect of it, so we get those done. When you come back, and the amount of time it takes her to do the minutes, she's got time then to do the financial stuff that she's working on.
That's all cloud-based.
It's all cloud-based.
And unlimited history, and my big thing was making sure, because we go, we refer back to old meetings by a lot, just to revisit what resolution we used, or, or how it was wording. So I wanted to make sure we have all that history, because we've been on Word docs since twelve.
It was twelve, it's transferable.
It'll transfer over.
They'll bring over to five hundred meetings.
Which I don't think we should. I don't know how many we have exactly, but just to have that history is valuable. I do think there is capability to, Tim, and you've had more experience with it, for like, the council to make notes, if there's questions they have, like on agenda, it's right in the system.
Yep, yeah, with the Civic Plus, you can do annotations, so if you put down notes on agenda item, only you see that. But that way you can refer to your notes right there on your meeting.
So.
So that's an easy way for you to keep track of what you have questions on, what you might see or need further information about.
And that is just kept to your computer only, nobody else sees it, so your questions, you know, some right there.
Now, I will tell you, while that's the way this works, nobody else can see it. I am not so sure that if it was requested under Freedom of Information Act, if it has to be released or not, because it is a working document, so there might be an exemption. But I, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not going to practice, so, but it, it, it's something that allows you to at least take notes, highlight something you might have a question on that you can raise up later on. The other thing is, as we get further down the road, where we're. Maybe going to do live broadcasts, this is a way for it to implement and interchange with that, too. That's another model, that's another cost, and we have to update cameras and stuff like that, but. The Civic Plus software that we're proposing is capable of handling that. Whereas Word docs, I'm not sure, we were, we didn't see that as part of the display.
I like the fact that they also said that they would train.
Yeah.
And I think that's going to be really important, because I, I would hate to use it unless something threatens me, so, yeah, so I like that, yeah.
But we could start with the buy.
Buy. And we wanted to say that later. Yeah.
Then it's just paying for the extra.
Correct.
And then I do think there would be some benefit to utilizing the same company for the website when our contract comes up, or at least review it when our contract comes up with SOX, to see. If it would make sense.
I'm most excited about that, because I know how much of a hassle it is to change websites, ID addresses, and.
Feedback from other people that have used this?
A lot of cities in Iowa are happy with it.
Are, yeah. More of their not happy, not comments?
I haven't heard any. I haven't been out asking unhappy comments, but most people, I think all one uses it, if I remember correctly. But I haven't seen pushback on them, I will tell you right now, do you want to ask me a year ago, which company is, I've been all over the Word docs, I have been as. But proponent of Word docs, I love what this beginning software is. The challenge was, we couldn't increase the capabilities of the software, that we have the Word docs without exerting the fee. Double, more than double what we were paying initially, and that's where I had to draw back. And now going through and looking at what Civic Plus actually does, Civic Plus has way more opportunities, yeah, we're going to have a little bit more. Or we go from three thousand to forty-two hundred dollars on an annual basis right now. But this is also a module that allows us to help Erin do the notes right off the bat. And there's another program novel they can use where we can just automatically dump things into Laserfish. We took that out because it was going to add too much right now, but we saw a lot of our notes on Laserfish and on the cloud. Uh, we can do that later on, but right now we'll just manually transfer that stuff on.
Is part of that initial seventy-three hundred, is that part of, is there training involved in that way it pumps out?
Yep, there, there's the training, there's the transfer of information to get download everything from Board Docs to set it up, uh set up our templates. So that's where it's, that first year, yeah, the first year is seventy-three and then thereafter it's forty-two hundred dollars.
Over six thousand, if we go back to diligent and do the same.
Yep.
They still can't do everything that these guys do, but correct. Otherwise it would be six thousand if we increased to what, ended what we do.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the challenge I have there, it, it's more expensive, if we do what we want to do with civic plus, we have to go to six thousand uh dollars a year as opposed to this forty-three hundred.
Um, if Doug were going to use it for a parking wreck, is he going to have the ability to do the minutes? Or does it mean Erin or Laura's going to be there?
I think Erin should do it.
No.
Actually, I didn't want to put any more on them was why I was asking, because if we're saying we're going to make it easier for it, but you gotta do more now, you know. So as long as he can have the ability to do that, because I know he does his own nuts, honestly.
Yeah, so this will allow him to track and stuff like that, but the challenge a little bit, let's be honest here. The city provides council members with Chromebooks for you that you use for your business. We don't necessarily do that for the other boards and if they're using it, it's just for them to access it when they're home looking at agenda packets. So this will allow them to create the agenda packets in the battle, but unless we want to provide them with Chromebooks so that they can or do it like you, which I'm not proposing.
I don't know that, you know, I don't know that it's not worth discussion as we go further down the road because there is a benefit to all of us to having that P and C packet live out there, you know, like our, like our agenda packet so people can go out there and look at those sub divisions or or the things that are being proposed, so um, you know.
If I understand correctly, this is supposed to auto populate to our calendar on our website too. So those meetings are on our calendar and you should be able to click on that and get to the link.
So I don't know that it wouldn't be something worth looking at. Um, if we could find, you know, any more of these, you know, Chromebooks are getting not very expensive.
Good, with setting them up and getting, yeah, there's a lot more to it.
I know, I know there is, but I think there's a benefit to having that information available, thought later.
So do you need us to say yes, we'd like?
What I'd like to know is, are you ready for me to bring it to the council on Monday night for you to discuss and make a proposal on? Yes. Yes. The, the challenge we have is the transition fourteen to sixteen weeks for them to bring us on board and it doesn't matter whether it's Board Docs because going from Board Docs to diligent, it's still a transition and they're still doing a rotation and training on that or civic plus. And so we need to get this done because we have until the end of the year.
That's when the Board Docs switches.
So what I'd like to do is get this moving forward so we get this implemented and use two programs for a little while till we're comfortable and just go to the end of the year.
I, I would say yes, we need to. Discussing.
Well, we'll just put it on the agenda for Monday night and.
We'll, we'll give you a list of a few other cities in Iowa, which O1 does for sure use it. I just Googled that, but I know there's, there's several, so we'll get you a list of some cities as well.
Okay, any other comments about that? Okay, empower, power rural Iowa rural housing readiness assessment grant, Tim.
Okay, so. Where'd you go? I just don't do, um, so what we're looking at is applying for a grant to the state of Iowa for the rural housing radius. And what this would do is allow us to move forward with the uh housing study, a comprehensive housing market study for the city of Manchester. There, we're supposed to have one done every five years in order for us to be eligible for certain grants. If we don't have one done, we're not eligible. Um, this is a grant, it's a two to one, basically the state will pay twenty thousand, we'll pay ten thousand. Ten is completed, part of the funding that we put together on this has to go towards um Iowa State Extension, that Iowa State Extension is who we're a partner with to do this program, we have to host an event. So that's part of what the ten thousand dollars the city's using is for. Um, I don't have a problem doing that. Again, this is a grant application, so we are going to apply for a grant, we're using ECIA to put this through as part of our key bio beautiful uh program, that's one of the um, we're going to use one of our grant applications that they have provided us under that program. So Dan Willian, who is working on this for us, uh we have until August twenty-ninth to get this submitted. Um, but part of this is, we have to ensure we have ten thousand dollars committed to this program. And I have to have that ready for us when we make that, take that to the council for res- resolution support, the five hundred grand. Council asked to sit there and say, yes, we have ten thousand dollars committed to this program. If we get it, we'll use the ten thousand, if we don't, it can go back into the general fund. Um, but questions I have with councils, uh we, we put this information out there. Part of what we'd like to do is be able to get the downtown and some housing done downtown. But I also need to know where we had on market rehousing, senior housing, where we got with rental housing as well. Now. We, we've added two hundred some housing units in the last five years, uh when we did our uh place making program or initiatives for place making um plan back in two thousand nineteen. We identified a number of housing units that we need to have and put together. What's changed or what shifted the last five years, because two thousand nineteen probably hadn't hit yet. Uh, we didn't have uh the big apartment complexes that we do now. Uh, those are the things we, we really need to identify what we have potential for. We've heard from industries that we need more workforce housing. Hey, but how many does that actually mean? Do, do we need to get another two hundred housing units in the next three years? And how are we going to do that? And part of what we're looking at is some redevelopment of property in town that is some blighted or uh is primed for redevelopment into lots, things that don't necessarily mean we have to expand outside the city or extend roads to, because that's what causes increases in price cost. We increase the cost a lot because you're paying for infrastructure. Um, that does add to the cost, so if we build cheaper houses by locating them uh in places that are redevelopable, that's great. The other aspect of it though is we need to make sure we're not putting things in the floodplain, we're in a hazard area, so. Right now, what we're doing is just applying for a grant, would like to apply for the grant, but we need to have from the city limited towards that if we get it. Is there any concerns?
Do we have a place to get the ten possible? Fourth question.
Qualifications we need to have to get this grant?
Well, the attachment I placed in there tells you what the uh uh application is going to require as far as information. It does talk about a housing committee, they'd like to have five to, or excuse me, seven to eleven people on a committee with a diverse background. Uh, and so I think we can look at um some of the members who are finding zone efficient. We did have a housing committee at one time five years ago and, and we look at bringing some of them back in, so we have some landlords, some realtors, bankers. Um, officials, city officials and stuff like that. Um, so we'll look at trying to put something together so we have a diverse background on the housing committee. But they do have a supporting uh project, uh applicant profile, basically what the city is. You talk about timing need, so we're, we're in that need now, um, it'll, it can be done in the next two years. Housing committee, um, top of five points with base will identify who we want on the committee. Um, again, they want a broad, like a large group, um, and they can serve multiple. So we have someone that's a landlord, um, and it doesn't say whether it's multiple family or single family, there's landlords. Those are something we put on there, bankers, realtors, uh council people, planning zone commission members. Um, so we'll talk about the documentation that we've done, that we've gone through, number of those, again, we're working on updating our comprehensive plan. Um, once we have Dan's application put together, you'll see more about what's going on. Uh, because we got to talk about that budget now we're going to use it. Uh, but a lot of this, this is that rule of power Iowa program. Um, and so I think it's important for us to at least reach out and try it.
Why did we get rid of that board originally five years ago?
It fell apart because there just wasn't anything moving forward.
That was largely to review the um.
Uh, housing.
And the CBPG grants too, that was also, um, and we, yeah, that program had kind of gone away, so there wasn't really much for that committee to do.
When you go through the rubric, it's, we can do well on it.
Yeah.
I mean, we should be able to, we should be able to score really high on it. So then the question becomes, and I'll ask my question again, do we have the ten thousand someplace? I'm assuming you're going to say yes, but I guess I want to hear you say it.
And I would, I would propose that we take it from the general fund, carry uh, you know, a surplus in there.
I mean, I don't want to make a decision and then say, oh my gosh, we don't have the money, you know, so I, that's why I needed to hear you say, yes, we have the money. But I think the rubric, we should be able to fly through that because when you go through it, we are high as long as the grant is written well, and I'm sure it would be, that um, yeah, I think we could, definitely.
The, the biggest challenge again is getting things put together in place and the deadline is always twenty-eight. So we've got two meetings in our eyes that we can approve, uh the resolution authorized and this Smith that. Um, and I think it's the twenty-fifth of August, I think it's the last week that we have before yeah, twenty-fifth for the grant deadline, so we are working to put everything together in that grant, trying to get council for review, but I want to make sure we discussed it before I came forward.
Personally, I prefer if we're going to move forward with us, we do it at the next meeting rather than wait until the last minute and okay, putting the city staff through a ring or trying to get all this paperwork at the end of the day.
We, we will have the uh agenda item on there, Erin and I will work to get the resolution put together. It may not be there tomorrow night when we send out the agenda, we'll get it added in the, for the.
A question, will you have to have the housing committee members before you sending?
I think we're going to identify those and that's going to be working with Connie when she gets back
Okay.
to identify committee members and asking them.
But we gotta get, we gotta get approved for the grant first before you really.
Now, we, we want to identify committee members, if this comes through, that's who.
Committee will go on that, yeah.
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 Different areas, yeah.
I guess I'd be curious on this study too to kind of know, I see one of the things is downtown upper story inventory.
Mm-hmm.
I think over the last couple of years, we've actually did lose some downtown upstairs apartments, I call them. Um, which parking downtown is at night is difficult.
It goes back and forth because we have different uh business owners that have changed thought process of whether they want some renting above them or not, just because they've had issues with the leaning uh water lines and stuff like that, because again, the uh infrastructure is old inside the buildings, they do tend to fail. Uh, but if there's a chance of potential for us to do something different with wider building or the second floor is something where we could put some rental properties up there, if we can try to find something we can do with that lighter building, that i- is beneficial to us.
Even in blighted areas, I, I don't want to use that word blighted areas, but terminology, uh to see some improvements in some of them, if a guy can, you know, maybe a couple of different nicer rentals. That can help the workforce, that would be a big plus plus, so I, I'm very interested, we should look into it.
Yeah, definitely. I think my hearing sense is we will bring this back to Monday night.
Okay, number six, the West Marion Street Bridge engineer selection, Tim.
All right, so we did go through this process of Mary Ann, Perry, Jason Ait, myself went through and evaluated and scored uh four different engineer firms that came on there. Um, we had really good firms uh submitted things in for us. Uh, it was close, again, the weighted scale came into play, uh we had four categories, uh consultants, experience qualification, it carried a weight of forty-five percent, so whatever the score was, forty-five percent was total given, technical approach and methodology was another one for thirty-five percent. Project schedule timeline was fifteen percent and because we wanted to give preference to local engineering firms, uh we did put that in there as well and that was a five percent. So when we went across and based off the weighted scale, Kirk and Michael was uh the one that received the highest uh score. Uh, part of that was Kirk and Michael was also partnering with Bergen Group as part of their program. Uh, Anthony Barget is also the engineer that Kirk and Michael was hired, if you remember, Anthony Barget was a county engineer and has done bridges, quite a few bridges as a matter of fact in the area. So uh based on what their proposal was, qualifications, they did score the highest and that is what uh the committee is recommending to the city council on the, on Monday night to work with them. And I did get a, a proposal from Kirk and Michael, expert of council through reviews to that. Everything will be in our firm Monday night. Are there any questions on the rubrics that we use or anything that we've done with this?
Uh, it's a little ahead of the game, but when we get the contractors to do the aspect of actually working on the bridge, are we going to have a uh early completion bonus attached to it to get them to?
Not, not necessarily, the challenges we're working on and we'll get that once we get into the details. But right now we want to time that so that we do the West Marion Street Bridge, the same time we do the reconstruction of South Franklin Street. That one, two hundred block, I guess it is, uh East Matt- East Madison and, excuse me, North, South Madison one hundred block. It is a Delaware street.
Yeah.
Because that's going to be that first leg of that storm sewer improvement and reconstruction of that downtown. So we're already going to shut that segment of the street down for re- total reconstruction, that bridge is going to be shut down anyway. So that's going to be the timing, we're going to have both projects going on at the same time. Uh, two different contractors, two different engineering firms, uh so it's very well segmented. And part of that is because West Marion Street Bridge is going to have federal funding, state funding on it. And that has a different requirements classification to what we're using local funds for our downtown reconstruction. I want to make sure that's a clear segregation, so we don't have any conflicts there. Uh, but realistically, what they were looking at on the bridge for the proposal, both of them, you know, a lot of the engineered firms put in their proposal, it takes sixty days. Construction days, no, calendar days, construction days, so that's three or four months. And I think that's realistic, the challenge is we want it done the same year and so what we're looking at is the summer twenty-eighth. Yeah, summer twenty.
And we're doing Anderson Street twenty-six and?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Again, it's, it's a challenge, but we can't fall too far behind on our construction schedule and uh if we're going to close down that intersection, that bridge, I only want to do it once because if we're doing total reconstruction, I'm going to have to close that bridge down again. I don't think that's very wrong.
Kind of an after, or probably not even at, at top of anybody's uh mind or whatever, but when we close that bridge down for that four months, we can't drive side by sides in the one hundred block, how do you get to one hundred from my house?
Yeah. Talking further?
Well, side by side, I think going down.
Yeah, uh, uh, those are things we'll have to talk about as we go through. Uh, because again, there's a lot of traffic comes across West Marion Street Bridge now. But it does uh dump out onto West Main Street, West Main Street still are number one traffic generator. And the traffic counts are done this spring, so I'm waiting for them to be released, I'd see them again.
There isn't a lot of what ifs, I'm not ready to, what if there's flood, what if there's a, yeah. So.
Take the same.
Yeah.
Anything else on the West Marion Street Bridge selection? Okay, compensation study proposal, back to Tim.
Okay, uh, I understand at the last meeting that I was not able to attend a committee role meeting. Uh, there's questions on doing a com- comprehensive compensation and a benefits study. And part of what, we talked about this back in twenty twenty-three, I actually gathered some proposals and asked for that to be done, uh to be looked at. The cost of the proposals of that kind was a little eye-opening for me, I was a little hesitant to bring that up. Um, what I'd like to do is have this done, simply for the fact that, you know, I want to make sure we are um in the industry standards for our level of compensation, but two, uh do the classification. What, what job skills are at what classification or what, what is that range? But right now, you know, the classification we kind of have is in the police department, union contract and it bumps up based on the number of years in service, but there isn't any other compensation classifications. If you're a sergeant, you just get what, seventy cents per hour more for being the sergeant. If you're the investigator, it was thirty-five cents more per hour for those classifications, but it didn't matter if you're. If you're the investigator, it was thirty five cents more per hour for those classifications, but it didn't matter if you're kind of great, you kind of follow the same schedule. Um, I'd like to see us look at this, but I also know it's a huge cost.
Is there other, other cities that have already went through this compensation?
Well, Dyersville, Dyersville has just done theirs.
They did theirs. Would they share?
Yeah.
Share information where maybe we would have to put the bill for doing this and we could like piggyback off of something that they've done?
We could, we could look at it. The, the problem that you run into from city to city is what the city clerk does in one city is completely different than what the state clerk does in another city.
Gives you a template.
It gives you a template. There's also, you know, like here, Streets does some sewer work, you know, I mean, we're kinda, each city is always kind of a little bit unique and.
And that's kind of where that wage classification, job classification comes into, because I'll review the job descriptions to see, hey, what skill do they have, or what skills or requirements are necessary to bring them together. Um, I, we do have a wage study that's done every year. We participate in the, that's a real wage study. Uh, and they do wages for towns between, I wanna say forty eight hundred to nine thousand.
I think it's three thousand.
I think it's way down low.
Okay.
Uh, I, I know it's four thousand. I don't think it's break down to three thousand, but um, so the cities have participated, get a copy of that, of that study back. And so we've been participating every year, so we'll see, and they break it down by a multitude of different uh, job descriptions. And you can kinda see what the average wage is and what the top is and what the bottom is. And they also tell you how many years of service they have in that city. Doesn't necessarily mean that's their total years of service in the profession, but just how many years have you in that city? Uh, and they also, they have done also for competent or wages and then benefits. Uh, they'll do electric officials too, mayors, um, council members, but as Aaron says, sometimes. The, the city clerk do one job, city clerk in, uh, do it does not do the same jobs city clerk in, in Manchester. Aaron does a lot like what the finance director or finance officer does and do it with the add benefits of the city clerk duties. I was just saying benefits. But uh, you know, there are two different descriptions of what they're doing, and so it's. Whatever. The, one proposal I got from V D A um, out of Minnesota, in the state of Minnesota, cities required to do this every five years. Which is what kind of caught me off guard in Minnesota. They require cities to do a wage compensation study or classification compensation service proposal. Um, and we can kinda pick what, what range we wanna be at, uh, or, or they had breakdowns of that. Again, I'm interested really in the market analysis, what wages are, but I'm also looking for that payment interest. What should we break down from step one to step five, eight, whatever steps we wanna go, what's the range in between and how they add it between them? Uh, do we do two and a half percent? Do we do one percent and a half? How do we get to that delineation? So, uh. You know, which scale are they at in years of service and the spread? Uh, I know you, you guys, Joe and Brian, you were used to that in the military, and military has that, that's the book out. Um, what I've done historically since I've been here is when we start something new, we'll say the street department is heavy equipment operator. I started two hours and fifty cents lower than our top equipment operator, and six months to get a fifty cent raise. A year to get a fifty cent raise, and we worked them up to whatever that top heavy equipment operators after five years. That's how I kinda set that benchmark out, so the new guy isn't making the same as the guy that's been here forever and has got those skill levels.
We could request a copy of Dyersville's, and then you could look at it and see what information is in it. It'd be a good starting point, probably.
Template to start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I said, we, we can discuss this more, is, I wanted to show you the proposals I collected back in the late great.
Dyersville just did. Did they ask us for information?
They did.
Okay.
Yep.
So we would be included in their information? I, I was just curious because it seemed like.
Already in chapters. I have question for Dyersville's proposals, who they had as comparables.
That's what I wondered.
You don't know that.
Yeah, I know, feel, comparables, and some of them were metro area city managers. Rural area is not the same as the metro. And.
I see you need to double say it with Dyersville.
Oh, yeah, Cedar Rapids definitely the same, but again, it's classification, job description is a city bag, but there's a responsibility levels. There are other things that come into play here.
I mean, they did Indianola in twenty twenty two, I mean, which I don't know if population is down there. They're just outside of, not far from it, you know?
Yeah, but they, they are county seat for Warren County. They have college in the town. I think they're like eighty five population, eighty five hundred. But there's different.
It'd be good to give an example of Dyersville, once we can.
Have something.
Evaluate.
Personally, after going through your pay raise stuff, Tim, I, I look at it and, and I question, are we all for everybody else too?
Yeah.
And that's why I wanna do the wage study. I wanna make sure that our, our folks are getting paid what they deserve, so.
Okay. I, I agree. I think we need to do it. I've seen some of the compensation, trying to compare them when we've looked at things. And who knows what these, you know, they call it something, but you don't really know what they're doing. It's just a name they've given to it. And so um, I think you do need to know what it is that they're doing as their job and so on. Um, I'd like people to be fairly compensated for what they're doing for us. We have a great staff. We need to pay it for the great work.
I think we need more information before we go forward.
But I, I will bring you back.
Yeah.
What they worked on, uh, and we can talk about it the next committee role meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um, engineering updates. Sam, wanna go first?
I'll have a whole lot of them, say Anderson Street, stormwater study, a whole lot there, where all the existing setup, we're going through, basically now, just going through, looking at alternates, kinda like we discussed. Going down Butler and then also taking everything from Butler to Madison South, and now letting it uh, south of the bridge. So once we get. Once we kinda get the alternates kind of together and see, you know, no more, which how, how big and type sided do we really need for a given storm event? And then we'll kinda discuss that with city staff, bring that back around. That's all I have. Unless there's any questions for me.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Jason.
Uh, we received some initial comments on the preliminary plans for the um, trail, Grand Avenue Trail last week from the D O T. Just basically they reviewed the typical sections and the preliminary profile and gave you a lot of their standard language back of what's gonna be required on check plans and what should be. Due to them here, uh, second week of September, so we're kinda getting that put together, still continuing to look at that January twenty twenty six, bit lighting on the D O T's calendar. So besides that, that's uh, that's what we're gonna go with right now.
Has there been a plan, I mean, when we go to actually instruct it or really try and wait after fair or do it before fair?
So that's gonna be difficult because the D O T kind of dictates the completion dates. We can try to have some suggestions to them.
Requests.
Um. As part of a reconstruction meeting with them, but yeah.
But they, yeah, but they do it, they kinda set it before you go out to bid, so it's something we'll talk to them about this fall, about being sensitive to the, the fair week. Um, but oftentimes, they don't really, give us a whole lot of options that way.
Okay, staff updates. I'm not asking the question, who wants to leave? So don't take that back, but is there anybody who needs to leave that we could?
A person.
Okay.
I can be on baseball practice.
That's fine. I, I assume there are things that people need to get. Jim, start thinking of a better.
Not that I wanna leave, but. Uh, okay, so the ballpark shelter restroom project is out for bids. They're due back Friday, August fifteenth at three P M. Uh, we'll see what those come back at. Um, as far as the pool goes, it's been a busy stretch, not so much this last week, once it got cool, but we did have a really good, oh, six week stretch there. Of, of hot weather. Uh, we have finished up our swimming lesson program. Um, you guys probably saw some of this in the, in last week's update, but so we had eight weeks of lessons. This year, we had uh, three hundred and seventy nine kids go through group lessons and four hundred and fourteen kids go through private lessons for a total of seven hundred and ninety three kids total, which is. Very high. Uh, we were about the same last year, and these two years, this year and last year are higher than we've ever had previous, so uh. Lot of, lot of instructors, a lot of lessons, uh, so it's been a really good program. And we, as of August first, we have started our August hours, which are one to five every day. And so uh, we, I started that about, I think, four years ago or so for two reasons. One is, and the biggest reason was staff shortages. Once we get August, we have college visits, college kids leaving, we have sports programs and practices and all sorts of stuff. And so we had a hard time filling those slots in the evenings, but it also is probably our least busy time slots as well, so not only did we, are we able to staff a little bit more. Uh, effectively, but we also kind of eliminated the, the least populated hours of our, of our time, so. Uh, it's been pretty well. We haven't had a whole lot of complaints, and it works really well for our staff. Uh, the last day is scheduled to be Saturday, August twenty third. Um, that is, we'll, we'll kinda live to the finish line like we always do. Um, as far as staffing goes, there'll be a few days where we'll probably have to. Shut down the slides or, or do away with um, the, the drop slide or something, because we're a couple of employees short, a couple lifeguards short, but. We'll get there and it won't be as bad as it's been in the past few years, but August is always a struggle, especially once college, uh, all the college kids leave. Um, and I know you saw this in, in the update as well, but the, our, uh, Reno Medical Center had the free day at the pool, and it just so happened to coincide with, I think, the hottest day of the summer. And so we had a grand total during that day of six hundred and ninety one patrons, which is a record. Um. We've probably gone over five hundred, maybe ten times since I've been here, and we've never even come close to going over six hundred like that, so six ninety one was a lot. Uh, three hundred and ninety two of those were, were admitted for free, which R and C will reimburse us for, so it was a very, very successful day, no issues, no incidents, but a lot of, a lot of happy people that got it for free. Uh, and then Shram Park, um, Huskies had finished their stage in between high water events, um, so they had poured. Got covered with water, went back down, they finished pouring, um, they hadn't canceled their last ski show due to the, due to the high water in the pond as well. Their next one is um, August fifteenth, and that's jam and tramp, so hopefully the water goes back down for them at that point in time, and it looks really nice. If you haven't had a chance to get out there, it may. Might still be a little bit underwater, but um, it looks really good. Beach is looking good. They've helped us with um, some of the beach. Uh, smoothing out, fixing up. Jason's crew has been um, bringing some sand in to try to fill in some of those spots, as well as fix some of the washouts, but. Um, we're, we're coming along well. We got a little bit of work to do before the hero hustle. Um, hopefully no more high water, so it'll help us out a lot. And then the final thing would be uh, Saturday, August ninth, this upcoming Saturday, um, the dog park committee is having a dog pool party. Party, B A W for paw, and then put some kitty pools in there with water and some vendors and so on, try and raise a little bit of money and have fun day for the dogs, for the dogs.
Thank you.
Next. What is my, do you? Twenty third, August twenty third. Yep.
It's all over.
Yep, Saturday the twenty third.
Um, do you know if the dog park's got any plans with their sign that says on front of the dog park?
Yeah, it's got a broken um, chain that keeps it stacked up. I'm probably just gonna get rid of it. It's starting to fade and, and bubble a little bit, so I think it's probably just gonna go for now.
I'm just curious. I, I pick it up every time I go to the brush.
Yeah.
I just kinda wonder.
You know, see that like leg back there, it's got, yeah, so it's, it's about fixing it. I think, I just actually went there today, and I thought it's probably die time to get out of there.
And then with that fence being there too, you might be able to get a banner made, zip tight to the fence where you know, well, right?
Yeah, it's, it's been weathered, it's been out there for two years or so, so it's, it's time.
Retired.
Yep. Yep. Anything else?
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Your third meeting.
Open. I'll go away then. Bye. So. We have not heard back from the I S O people yet. It's been what, two months, three, three? I would think we hear back from them sometime fairly soon. Uh, speaking of no responses, I've gotten nothing from FEMA on our grant application. Haven't heard a word from them. So, who knows if we will. I, I did. Usually, Hank said, or my client said that uh, the last time that we applied for it, we heard back from them in June.
Did you know when you guys applied for it?
How, when did they last for, last fall?
No, I mean, when he said the last time he heard from.
Yeah, it's, it's a yearly, oh, it's a yearly.
Put it in the fall and it waits for June to hear that.
So, uh, we did get parking lot bids back. They were due today at three, or yeah, three o'clock. So, y'all, you're. Go over those real quick.
You can.
Yeah. Uh.
We'll have those out for the council to discuss on Monday night.
Yeah. So, East Iowa would be a little bit, apparently a little bitter, at fifty nine thousand, six hundred and twelve?
We had budgeted seventy five thousand.
Well, there'll be a little bit of extra cost on top of that, just due to, this, some of the surrounding concrete's kinda broke up and have to remove that, just to get everything to match up and everything else, but. Well, everybody else, there was, everybody else is pretty much right, and kinda right in the ballpark, but uh, East River apparently was hungry. Pretty near work, so. Well, that was, that was good. Um. We got pretty lucky on storms.
Yeah.
How we had blow through, no real damage, I.
Hey, I was. Houses I know, but I don't know what extent of the.
Yeah, so we got pretty lucky there. Uh, and then we're gonna, Ed and I are gonna watch a thing on MOSAP tonight, which is that. Length of Service Awards Program. That could, that the uh, state just signed into law, so we're gonna, we're not really sure what that all, what that all still entails. There really is no guidance from them as far as what people are gonna do with it. Some think maybe they'll turn into like a small hybrid program type of thing, some might be a cash payout at the end of the year. So there's, there's not really a, a definitive outline of what this thing's actually supposed to be, so. We're gonna watch something on that tonight, and we'll get back beyond that, but just so you're aware. Of it, we, whether we participate or not, entered or not, we're still not even sure. So. We'll find, hopefully we'll have a few more details later tonight. Get back to you on it, so. Um. Other than that, been pretty routine and pretty quiet, which is good, good compared to the way that you're starting. What do you guys got planned for tonight? Uh, we're gonna cut some cars up, apparently. We're at. So.
Last week, yeah, we picked up storm debris for a couple days, three days. Uh, ran through, got through most of the town streets, we were picking up all the little stuff. There's a little bit to finish up, and I'm gonna leave it towards the end of this week. So we can get the school area painted before that, uh, for teachers are already starting to come back, actually, Gary called me this morning and, and uh. If they needed us to move cars or anything, because there's already people starting to come back, so we'll try to get that knocked out this week, and we're winding down the paint, and there's a little bit left, but. Um. That's the big thing. We got going on. We got a sewer to fix over on Butler Street that I'm working with Luke Ogden to, uh, he got backed up because of weather too. And then working with Sam, someone, uh, finding some sewers and stuff over there, so.
That's the big things that we got going on anywhere right now, so.
Yeah, are you gonna cut apart? Uh, I see you cut whatever part off.
Yeah.
That's history. You gotta try to patch and.
Yeah, we got, so I have a bunch of patches sawed up on Hansel Street now, and as soon as we get done painting. I'd like to get that sewer fixed on Butler, and then we'll start tearing into, yeah.
Couple of glass, we.
Yeah.
I'll pull it, but.
Yeah, so.
Probably not so hot.
For a month, a set of tempers, kind of my plan is to attack, yeah, attack it.
I have a question for you, Jason. Around Terrell Park, there's a lot of brush and overgrowth around the park, around the water. Can that be trimmed down? Because it looks pretty poor for people coming in town.
Yep.
So we can trim some of that some better.
Yeah, we should, sometime Doug and I should uh, get down there and see what, what's all being.
It looks.
I've been getting that a lot here lately from some people about retention areas and. I've been getting that a lot here lately from some people about retention areas and things like that that need to be under that.
And even along the back street by Walmart, trees and junk along the land, we should be taking care of that and that.
Yeah.
That's part of the bigger conversation we're gonna have with the council as far as mowing, uh, street right of ways. Uh, because one of the things we need to look at is how much maintenance do we really need to do on our mowing? Because there's some areas we're contracting out for mowing on a legally basis. I'm wondering why that's not necessarily adjacent property or responsibility.
I agree.
Uh, and so we had enough stuff to mow, but kind of like what the state does, three times a year, about all we, we need to mow because we got a bunch of other things we need to work on. So that'll be the conversation once we have identified all of the areas we mow right now. And look at, is what's the responsibility for us to maintain and what is, should be adjacent property in there?
So when you get on these property owners' case and say you need it, keep us clean?
Well, then that's, depending on what the council tells us to do, yes.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's been broad. Way that you're favorite too, so.
It just doesn't look very nice at all.
This year's been a horrible year, the horse we, and everything else too, but that didn't help anybody else, but it's. And that's another thing too, is we're just about wrapped up with, with spraying. There'll be some lot of things here and there, but we got just a little bit to finish down the south quadrant. Then the town will be all sprayed for one time, so.
Well, just so I bring it up.
Yes.
Have a nice, or.
Thanks, Jason.
Yep.
Awesome.
Well, so I talked a little bit about this in the memo, the summer reading is over. Uh, there were, uh, four hundred and forty-three participants. I did have, uh, the most attended program was the Shark Pet Tank. Um, it was, had a hundred and seventy-five participants. And the, there was another one that was kind of eye-opening too, a storytime on location at Bailey's Ford had seventy people show up. Our biggest storytime on location, I think, was at the fire station last year. I think there were like ninety-nine people and one firefighter taking care of everybody. Oh, I mean, we did a storytime on that part, but we had two staff members there for that and then the one fireman, so. Um, so that's, it was good turnout, good things, um, that we had for, for that. Um, just a reminder that the Friends of the Library for V United is this Friday. Doors open at six thirty, you can sign up ahead of time, you don't have to. Um, trivia starts at seven, and this is at the Legion, uh, raffles and prizes will be available for purchase. Uh, well, raffles for prizes will be available for purchase. And then just an update for you guys to know, um, we don't receive federal funding. I think, I think you probably know that, but the State Library of Iowa receives federal funding from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. That has been cut drastically. Um, so those services, it started, it's starting to trickle down to us. Um, so things that now have been affected is, um, Help Now slash Brain Fuse. It was free tutoring and study, um, uh, study help, uh, Job, Jobs Now and Vet Now. They're all kind of one thing together. Um, Jobs Now with helping with resumes, you can get actually live people to help you. You can send a resume to them, they can help you fix it up. Vet Now, any vet services, things that you could help with vets, all that is, is gone. Um, they were trying to figure out a way that they could do it, but it, it's expensive for a library to buy that on their own. And so I just don't think it's possible for us to use that. Um, the Foundation Directory Resource, which was a grant database for anybody to use, um, that is no longer available as well. And then Interlibrary Loan Delivery, um, used to come two times a week, um, during open hours. Uh, and they are going down to one day a week with a different facilitating system. It's actually gonna be the Area Education Association, so the AEA is going to be delivering. Um, right now, there's some confusion on when it's coming through the summer. But, um, once, I think once school starts, it's going to be coming at eight fifty on Monday mornings. Open at eight fifty on Monday mornings. And so we will deliver the things here to be picked up and then they will deliver it here on Monday morning at eight fifty and then we'll come and pick it up, um, on our way into work kind of thing. Um, so a little different, like we, we did end up getting a delivery today, which is really late. We didn't know that there was a different schedule, that was not communicated to us. Um, but we didn't get very much, so there's, there's a big delay. We haven't had a delivery for two weeks actually because of the turnover, the changeover. They needed to get everything that was in the system to the people, but we didn't have anything left. So, um, just some things I wanted you guys to know that we're, we're seeing some of that trickle down to us now. Even though we don't personally receive the federal money, the state does. And the state provides a lot of free things for libraries to be able to use or discounted things. Um, Libby is part of that too, and right now they're not doing any changes to that. But I know they're trying to figure out their budget stuff with that as well. To be able to keep those things that are important, um, Interlibrary Loan Delivery, if we don't do that anymore, it becomes, um, the library's responsibility to send it through the mail. And it's four twenty-five for every book that gets sent. So they used to do that, I think it was right before COVID, actually, they started this Iowa share thing where they started delivering it. So, and we no longer will be getting that through, um, universities. They just got that set up for universities that we didn't have to pay for that. Now we have to pay for universities again because they're not part of this system. So it's kind of, it does affect us a little bit here or there, but, um, just if you ever hear anybody talking about it or anything, that's, that's kind of what, how it's affecting us here. And it might affect us more as, as the year goes on, so. All right, that's all we have. Thank you.
Yeah.
Curry.
Me?
Yes.
Joe, I'll try not to talk too many numbers, we don't laugh at me this time. Um, we safely made it through July with all the flooding. Our flows have been over a million gallons a day for three weeks, I believe. And we peaked out at two point four million. So if you have any friends or anybody that you know has a sump pump that is not pumping into their yard, if you could ask them to get that out of the city sewer, that would be greatly appreciated. With that, we've had a few issues at the motel list station, the list station between Dollar Fresh and Dollar Tree with some high flows from the dry run that runs out to the sheriff's office. And the industrial park list station at Tram Drive with some issues by a little pond off of Barrington Road, getting dammed up by some beavers and floods and mammals. So when it dries up this fall, get the camera in there and do a little exploratory to see what we can do to, uh, leave some of that. Uh, July was a UV month. And with all the high flows, we still came through it just fine, patiently waiting for shipments to arrive. Had a little glitch right on in, the air dryer and the compressor that runs the cleaner from UV blew up. It was just put in in March, but company rushed us a warranty replacement real quick. So that didn't cause any problems on our last test. Um, hopefully, uh, hopefully you will, um, the next packet that you get, there'll be some big prices to replace the pump that Fairview that we rebuilt a couple of years ago. Trying to get a few more years out of it. There's now, the seal's leaking again and water's getting into the motor, so that's one, Joe, that's just one.
Um, beer expensive.
Actually, it's pretty, but you'll see the price for that. We got a couple quotes from Northway Well and Pump and Electric Pump on those. So I will send something out to Aaron and have it in the packet for tomorrow. And while I was sitting here, I just got some locades, which have been crazy lately. Kamala will, next week will be moving to North Town Schulteville, which will be their last run for their project. So that is the last subdivision that they have left on their agenda to finish up for their big project of getting internet to the city. I know they are looking at coming back after we finish up the two years of Anderson Street and running that. Until we get that done and all the sidewalks and everything are in place and they know where everything's at, they're gonna hold off on that, so. Other than that.
Question.
Um.
A hundred million years ago.
Okay, I was here.
Yeah, I know you were. My old work. Jesus was a baby when you started here. You can talk about how they used to fog, fog, smoke sewers.
Smoke that sewers.
Can you do that anymore?
I don't remember. We did that for several years. A while back, we did the whole southwest side and, but since then, we've replaced all that sewer and stuff over there. But yes, we can do that.
It's expensive or, but I remember you always saying that's what kind of made your high flow count was because people had.
Yeah. The pump. The last two years have been so dry that our flows, you know, have been under five hundred thousand gallons a day. And now we, we had twelve point one inches of rain in July. And you're more than tripling your flow just from the ground getting wet again, so.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was expensive to do, if it's worth looking into.
It, it's worth looking into, you just need to find your problem areas.
Joe's house. Yeah. Yeah. Joe.
Which we know too now because of the list stations fighting. Every time we get a heavy rain, and we've had DNS portables there pumping them out just because the pumps can't keep up. And you have to do something with them before you start flooding basements, so. It's just luckily on those two list stations, there are not full out basements. It's all commercial areas, so you have a little more time, but it seems like we're spending a lot of time every time we have a heat drain event, taking care of those areas. And it's just on that, we feel needs to be addressed at some point. Yep.
It'd really be nice to get back on generators, huh?
One hundred percent. No, that was another, the generator, our generator at the wastewater plant, um, for the last six months has been having a startup issue. And three out of Quad Cities has been coming up and trying to diagnose it weekly for the last six weeks. Well, we had the power outage south of the railroad tracks and that last big storm, I started getting alarms right away and I knew when it happened, I, but I tried to leave and it was just too bad to leave, so I waited a few minutes to get down there. But the generator failed to start. So the entire plant had shut down and it took us roughly three hours to get every, once we got the generator running, to get everything back up and running correctly. With a lot of computer issues and talking issues and, and now at that same time, we had
trees down.
Industrial Park, Grayson's has a, a generator, so it caused no issues. But Industrial Park is still taking out some of the water without any power to run it. So I know we had implied.
And they basically came back and said, don't waste your time.
For some grant money to try to get a generator to some of those major list stations, so. Three will be here again on Friday to do some more diagnostics on the generator, but that's a high priority for us because it can't, it has to start when we lose power on that south side of town, so. But yes, I don't, Jason, I'd love to see.
It just take.
It cringes a little bit, but I'd love to see generators at all list stations, but.
The problem is, is when we got trees and everything down across the streets and I got my crew out of the streets and it takes two people to man that truck to be pumped.
And our jetback only can pump eight hundred gallons. So if you get Billy or, or DNS portables or any, you know, they're pumping three thousand gallons at a time. So it's, it's getting ahead a lot faster with.
And we barely. Three to five minutes.
We can keep it out of the basements for a little while with ours, but if it gets real bad, we have to start calling backups, so. Well, generator will take care of that, bro. Right then.
Maybe.
Thank you, Barry.
Marcus.
Thanks, Barry.
You're, you're expensive.
Um, Awan Reynolds. Working on that parking lot and gonna settle inside that building. Got a lot of things out there, yeah. Going very off to the west. There you go on that. Um, RMC started putting concrete there, addition on the back of the, the hospital there. As we, XL trailers, we're meant for this, put an addition on the south side of, of the building out there. That's one of the two additions that we're talking about. As an R construction started, uh, very houses all this year, out there today, so. The third house, um. Any questions?
Paints in the ground, I'll buy cases.
Oh, yes, there's a bank going out there by the.
Commerce Bank is building a branch out there. Uh, it'll go before the city, or planning's on a commission for a site line of view. It is next week, you know, the city council there at the end of month.
Where exactly is that at, Bill?
Um, it's P L subdivision out there. It's all the, it's all the, it's all the, it's north of the, Boulder's hotel, huh?
I know, I, I'm sure. I also heard the Royal McDonald's is coming to town.
Well, I'm like that, I think since I've started here, um.
They're just lately.
Can you back me up?
I know there's a check to it a little harder this year, I guess, I don't.
I think it may, you know, a little harder than it, um, look into it. I don't know if they're coming or not.
Is there any truth to the old days then being bought?
I believe that has been.
Is that one of the high Walmart?
Yes.
Yes, that was bought there. That is hotel.
Not as a hotel, it's gonna be with apartments from what I've been hearing.
Yes, yeah, that, that's the understanding at this time.
Hmm.
Nothing's been installed in it.
Ain't fine.
Oh, I have another question. Um, what is the ordinance about people selling out their furniture on the curbside? Do you have some time to get it out there or?
Yeah, I mean, usually they'll, they're not, they're really in ordinance, they're not supposed to put it out there. But if they're having, like, please don't go and pick it up. That's what it's supposed to do when they put it out.
Okay, well, I think a lot of times the freezer don't pick it up, other people pick it up and take it home.
Well. There's not much we can do about that. It's, if they put it out there, we see it sitting out there, we'll cite them or tag the door, tell them they get twenty-four hours to remove it.
They get twenty-four hours?
And then if it's not removed in the twenty-four hours, we will pick it up, dispose of it and assess or charge the property owner for the disposal of, of the nuisance space, right?
Right. Do we actually send our city employees out to get that or we just call police?
We'll just call police.
Okay.
Any abatement goes through, basically goes through police.
Okay.
No, it's easier for us to track, so we don't have to sit there, get accused of losing, say, finding the trail. What is that really cost versus, like, contract or?
Thanks, Tim. Thank them. Dad. Um, then you, you timing yourself, I saw you.
No, I will, shut off my phones. Um. So we've been spinning valves, uh, we've got a couple leaks, two service side leaks and a lardine break since the tuckie is last. Uh, it's gonna keep us kinda hopping, um, other than that. And, uh, we got a couple big jobs that we'll, we'll plan on doing a couple valves up here this fall. Um, we'll be going and spend the valves, I already reviewed, find ones that are as happy as they should be, so. Got three on the, the knocking block this year, so we gotta fit that in with Jason's, uh, patching schedule to try to have an opportunity to already get those all done. Um, been working a little bit with, um, Ryan with Faragam. Um, he's kind of taking up the, the deal with idols on dealing with retention areas and some of our issues. Um, we're, we're kind of working on another site to potentially move forward and, uh, talk with the landowners. Potentially mend your future, um, that's always on everybody. Two floods, um, just want everybody to know that those things are still on our radar. Those things are still being looked at and thought about, um, like everything comes down to funding, man time. So, um, there's still ideas out there, there's still things that we, and Jason, Jason also, not a different one. Um, so I, I don't want you guys to feel like that's something that we've kind of turned our head on, but it's definitely still on our radar. But, um, like everybody knows, we have budgets, so. Then we don't own the properties, so that's always the biggest hurdle. But. Other than that, we are not hoping record levels of waters. I don't know where various extra two million gallons are coming from. Um, we're, we're actually kind of low right now for coverage, which is awesome.
I have a question, I have to catch a buzz. I have a question about the retention ponds. Do they ever dry out? There's always water main.
So it depends on the style. So the ones that we flood out there by, um, the Good Neighbor Home, those aren't what you would call a retention pond. Those are called meandering floodwaters. Um, so with that, we, we intercepted an eight inch, eight or twelve inch tile line.
Twelve, it was twelve.
So.
It's twelve when we hit it, but in the water.
Well, there's, there's a, there's a big tile line that kinda runs out through all that and out into the, into the county. Um, we intercepted that and that all dumps into that meandering floodwaters now, so the idea there is to run it through there. Um, to help treat that water, you know, for our nitrate issue, but it's also designed to retain water. So if you look at the higher walls that are around it and just the way it's designed in there, so it is designed to hold more water than what you normally see in there. Um, so no, those will never dry out, they're designed to be wet. Um, now, like, if you see one, like, one that pops into my mind right away, it'd be the one out in front of what's now the U D U building. North end of town, there's that big extra swale down the ditch, now those do get dry. Um, those are designed for a high, you know, big rain event, because it's coming off of a paved surface, so that goes into that structure. Sits there, soaks away or falls on. Um, you see quite a few of them, there's, there's one, you know, just crossed from FS, same, same scenario, where they're there to. To gather that water and then soak away. But the design for that is to have water.
Okay, I really sense.
Yeah, and then, um, cashers are a bunch of them. The ones that no one sees, like Walmarts, they're just under their parking lot. It's a whole bunch of big light ones, part of mine, and that holds the water and then, and then this guy gets a certain level before they're charged out to the ditch. So theirs is hidden.
They started patient, they know that's so.
But, yeah, it comes out of the sign, what you're trying to accomplish with the water.
No washing out there at the meandering one?
Yes, we did.
Did you do washing?
The, the second cell, which I'll call the, the Good Neighbor Home cell, um, it came over the top of that one. Eventually, and then I'll scour that walk path that's on top. We're gonna fix the trail of background and again to where we, where we're hoping we're through the, the high water event, say about a tram, because we picked up a spot that was.
Let things dry out.
And the watch, the big watch actually occurred the first time.
Oh, wow.
And, and you know, they're designed to hold a lot of water, but not, yeah, you know, a lot of water when, when you have those kind of rainfalls. There's, I mean, you'd have, you know, like a Silver Lake type sized retention to hold back everything that we make it. Those, those diagrams are, those have all been. Drawn out by engineers through the years on what it would take to hold it all. City would have to, kind of, some serious money to buy a, a lot of land, so.
Anything else? Ben?
I really don't have much, um, then we updated his, I'm sure, it's all posted, uh, very large game that we done, um, that we have covered. The only thing is with that, we will no longer be covering that, I'm forgetting the names, we with the FBI, they're gonna undertake that, so they've got better resources to try to have them, obviously outside of states than what we do. Uh, and that's been oddly busy, so. Considering all the big events are kind of over except for family fun night tomorrow night, but. They're busy, the guys are.
Okay, thanks, man. I'm gonna do like the, I'm gonna give a pause. Nope, thanks, man.
Yeah, we've been having some camera issues tonight, uh, we know this, one camera is high, we're off. And so we have some video stuttering, blurry from about six o'clock till about six twenty-three, when I moved this. Camera over to help catch the microphone over there, that's when it came back on, so we may have some issues with audio and video tonight, I'm, gonna look at, acquired a couple new cameras.
Brian? Send it. Go.
I got a couple things, real quick. So, uh, storm cleanup for the city, uh, streets guys and everybody involved in that, I just wanted to give, uh, the, them props on that. They came and cleaned that tree up pretty quick over on Delaware Street. Uh, I seen Jason over there, so I'm just letting everybody else know, I just wanted to give them props, because that was quite. I mean, it wasn't a lot of storm damage, but it's still extra that we weren't planning on taking care of. Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, I've had the ability to look at some of the body cams from officers. Um, with some complaints that have been coming across, uh, to me and whatnot, and I just wanted to just kinda put that to bed. Everything I've seen, I haven't seen anything out of the ordinary that looks like. People were aggressive or anything like that, so, um. I know that a lot of people have been getting hold of me, asking me like, hey, are we gonna look into that, are we gonna do any things to this stuff? And there's just not anything to work on, so the cops are doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're just. Writing more tickets than people are used to, I guess, I don't know, so. Just wanted to kinda put that out there.
Bill?
Uh, no, I just had thirty or four people up in our neighborhood said, yes, kudos to the city for storm cleanup, did a wonderful job. A couple of them still worry about the flooding that happens up in. George fourth up there in the trailer court, they're like, ooh, it gets pretty deep sometimes, so. But I said, it's something we're trying to look into, but it could take a while before it can be fixed, so.
Yeah.
Other than that, no, that's all I got.
I have nothing to say, so. Yes, sir.
Someone forgot.
Okay.
I brought it up earlier, um, today with me, he was looking at different funding routes for V F D engineering. Um, Tim found a, I don't remember the word you said.
It is a zero interest loan to the design and planning and design loan through the, uh, state with all the funds, because we'll be using those. Monies to do the V F Ds, so this is the first start, and so.
What are V F Ds?
Verbal.
Very good for your item, your item, so the variable speed bonds.
Yeah.
And so basically, because we know we're gonna go down that route, we'll be using the S R F funds. Or not, but we right now use their funding stream at zero percent interest for the planning and design. So we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars for engineering on this, with five thousand dollars for part of the. Administration cost, so a hundred and five thousand dollars will be coming to you guys for a planning and design loan request, it'll be S R F funds.
And a real good for engineering.
Well, we have to pay back, but it's zero interest, so that way we don't have to expend our money on it.
And I think that's a great idea.
Okay, if he's not opposed. Um, at six thirty-seven, I think we are adjourned.